Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, thirty-five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance requiring budget reports to the city council at the second city council meeting following the end of each quarter. Councilman Andrews?
On last meeting, each member of the council was provided a draft of what the budget report would look like. If that budget report is ran on that particular day, it would be stamped with that date and that time. We could run it from, I think the one that you had a copy of was running from June, the end of our fiscal, beginning of our fiscal year up until that particular date. But if there's anything else in there that we would like to add or take away, we still have those options. But it was a breakdown by each department. Anyone from the public and the council have any questions about that?
I just want to say thank you for getting with the administration, Kip. I know that you worked on getting that language to where it would be easy and cost-effective for the city to produce a report to give us the information we're asking for.
You're welcome. And always remember that that report is going to be at least thirty to forty, maybe sixty pages in this, providing this information.
In the process of us getting a report, is in any way that we can show it in the books, on the email, whether a citizen of Hammond can also see it, not just us?
Yes, I'm quite sure we can get it hyperlinked.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's where the public can keep up, where the spending is going in the city of Hammond. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It says on here, the budget shall be also not only sent to us, but posted to the city website by the close of business of Thursday preceding the meeting. So, I think you've provided for that.
Anyone else? Number two?
Excuse me, an ordinance to approve a street naming request by Devon Wells to rename Carolina Street to Willie Grant Jackson Drive. Charles Boucher.
Yes, this was introduced at the last council meeting. It went before the Planning and Zoning Commission twice at their work session on November seventh, and again at their public hearing on November fourteenth. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there someone here to speak on this? We could ask, answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Anyone from the council?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to the administration from getting this name put in place. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Number three?
An ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Kenneth Crockett to rezone five-one-seven Hewitt Road from RS dash eleven point A to MX dash N in accordance with the preliminary plot by Max Bowden, Inc., dated eight-twenty-one twenty-four. Charles?
Again, this was introduced at the last council meeting, went before the Planning and Zoning Commission twice at their work session on November seventh and their public hearing on November fourteenth. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission as recommended in the attachment. And I'll ask this gentleman to speak on the project and if there are any questions that the council and public has.
What's your name?
Name and address, please.
Ken Crockett. Dan was, it might be about five seconds too quick. Looked at two D zones that showed that, that the backs actually sewed adjoining walls to build a assisted family system, a senior care home.
Anyone have any questions on this particular item? Thank you. Number four?
An ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Brian Dozer to rezone one-zero-zero-nine C M Fagan Drive from MX dash N to MX dash C in accordance with the preliminary plot by Martin Surveying Solutions, LLC, dated six-twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Charles?
Again, this was introduced at the last council meeting. It went before the Planning and Zoning Commission twice at their work session on November seventh and at their public hearing on November fourteenth. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. If there's anyone here to speak on this, I would ask them to come forward.
Anyone on this ordinance? Anyone from the council? Thank you. Excuse me, did you have a question? Okay. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, five-thirty-six P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Wells. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Our prayer. Most gracious, loving Father, we come to you one today. Father God, asking you just to continue to touch us right now. Continue to guide us and keep us right now, Father God. Continue to order our steps. We come right now thanking you for your son, who you allowed to die in our place, and that we are thankful. Father God, we just come right now asking that you continue to shine your light and your love upon those that have lost so much in California right now. Those that are buried up under snow right now on the north side, Father God. If there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. And Father God, I ask you to continue to lift us up right now, Father God. Continue to bind us together. Oh, Father, we just thank you right now. We ask that you continue to bless our city, our state right now. Ask you to continue to bless this council and those that are members right now. Continue to bless their families. We lift up our city administration to you. Continue to touch our mouth. We ask that you continue to cover our fire department and our police department as they continue to protect and serve us. Bless each city official, each city worker right now, Father God. Continue to move in Hammond like never before. We thank you that this evening, Father, everything will be done decent, order-pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise because it belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. All veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're down in our agenda for our election. Election of our president for city council for twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to elect Kip Andrews.
Second. Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Election of our vice president of the city council for twenty twenty-five.
I nominate Corley Gonzalez for vice president.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve our minutes of our December twentieth, tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
As pain.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
At this time, we'll have a presentation from, of the flood study.
Evening, councilmember.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andre Monow with Principal Engineering. I'm going to give you just a quick status for four.
Is your mic on? Sorry.
There we go. On now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. My name is Andre Monow with Principal Engineering. Going to give you just a quick status report on the letter of map revision effort. So we'll talk, remind you of what the objective was, the basics of a flood insurance rate map, where we are with the letter of map revision, the tasks and the status, and then we'll show you what our proposed map is to FEMA. Okay, so the objective.
Can you bring the mic just a little closer? Sorry. Are people watching or can't hear you?
All right. All right. I'll, I'll just read off the slide. The objective is to revise the flood insurance rate maps within the study area to adjust the base flood elevation. So what that means is we're not changing physical reality. We're trying to make the maps better represent physical reality. Those were models accomplished by FEMA many years ago. There's been a longstanding belief in the city that those maps are inaccurate. And our study concurs with that. So we prepared our evidence and submitted that to FEMA. In two thousand nineteen, we began by looking at that. That's when we said, yes, we believe there's potential. And then we were released in November of this past year. We made application to FEMA with the modeling and the reports and the information for their review and hopefully concurrence. Okay, a lot of lines on this map. In the center is the city. The red line is the outline of city limits. Little dashed black line where you see the bulk of that blue shading, that is the study area. That blue shading represents mapped special flood hazard area, or areas where there is a base flood elevation. So, in other words, flood zone. The blue shading is the flood zone. So you, you can see where the bulk of the mapped flood zone is. That was our focus. That's where we believe the greatest opportunity for benefit would be. So say areas south of the university, south of University, or south of Church Street, and there's not a lot of mapped flood hazard, there's not a lot of potential for improvement there. Okay, the, the basics of a flood insurance rate map, it is a map that shows you the results of hydrologic study. And using that map, then the National Flood Insurance Program establishes the requirement to, to hold or not to hold flood insurance. So it's, it has a big deal on the, on the finances of the individuals in or outside of those zones. And the progress is, is hydraulic modeling and study, followed by the mapping exercise, and then the publish, publishing the, the rate map. Okay, our assignment was broken into three tasks. The preliminary analysis, which is complete, the modeling, which is complete, and then task three, the mapping report and application. So the mapping and the report, the draft are complete, and the application was made to FEMA in November of twenty twenty-four. By regulation, FEMA has ninety days to review and respond. We've spoken with them. They expect to respond any day. They'll write a letter. They issue a long list of comments. Now, we've been through this exercise several times. There are always comments. And then that starts the clock again on the next ninety days. So we, we iterate with technical revisions and comments until the engineers at FEMA and our office and the community all agree. And at that time, then the, the loma becomes preliminary, and it's published to the public for comment. So it goes out for public comment, and in six months, if there's no objection or other comments, it becomes effective. That's, that's kind of the timeline. Okay, this is a zoomed-in view of your existing map. Again, the, the red dashed line there is the city limit. The blue shaded area are the existing flood zones. And this is a view of the map we proposed to FEMA. I have that big subject to change written on the center because it, it's guaranteed to change. We've been through this, and you put two people in the room, and they're going to come up with different solutions. So all of our documentation, all of our models, that's all been sent to FEMA. They may take a different, a different look at it, so it's going to be adjusted here and there. The green areas, that green shaded area, those are mapped flood zones now that we propose to keep as flood zones. The light blue shade, not the dark blue, but the light blue shade that's kind of semi-transparent, those are mapped flood zones now that we propose to remove from the maps, so they would no longer be flood zones. The dark blue and the brown are proposed map flood zones. The brown is X, the blue is A. So that's what we propose to remain as special flood hazard area. And that's the, that's the trial map. So a good part of the city would come out. Now, the, the basis of those reductions are how much water is coming from Ponchatoula Creek, and then what does that water do when it arrives in the city of Hammond, or when it arrives in the study area? So, the, the engineers in our office believe that FEMA overpredicted slightly the amount of water coming at the, at the design storm, at the one-hundred-year event. So we show a reduction, and we give our, our case to them for, to make that reduction. We also think even more importantly that they used approximate methods to, to perform the mapping. So we used a more detailed methodology, which refines the limits of the flooding. So that is responsible for the, for the greatest reduction.
Big change.
It's a big change. So even if they, if they reject our reduced flow, you're still going to have a big change. It would look a little different. So, you know, when you look at this map, please remember, it is going to change. How much it's going to change in the review process, we, we don't know yet. Okay? But this is, this is a first draft, and it's going to go through several iterations and several changes as we proceed through the review process with, with FEMA.
So in, in your past dealing with FEMA, with the, I would say, a big change like what we're seeing here, is there a lot of pushback from them? Because the original map that was put up was what they decided what, what it was.
Right. I've found them to, to act in good faith and to be interested in getting to the truth. So... They, those are smart people hired to do those reviews. So they generally look at the evidence, and if there's a, you know, a weak spot in, in our work, they'll point it out. And if they, if they disagree on a matter of judgment, they'll point that out, and we'll talk about it. Ultimately, it's their decision to accept it or not to accept it. But, but the way it's proceeded is, is they make adjustments until they agree.
So, the dotted ones, the second one, the green is the first one to remain, the second one with the dotted, that whole area right there, y'all are recommending to remove from the flood zone, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And now, what was y'all's methods to, to keep the, the green areas?
You know, keep them out from actually looking at changing them?
Okay. There's a study area. So, you know, our sort of three legs to that.
Yeah.
One is, is we have a limited study area. We're not studying the entire parish or the state of Louisiana. So we had to, we had to kind of draw the lines. And in the, the two thousand nineteen effort, we looked at where the, the greatest possibility for benefit was. And that's how we defined our, our study area. Next is, when, when you do these maps, you have to tie in the new flood zones with the old flood zones. So you, you don't have, I'm, I'm making these numbers up. Let's say you don't have a base flood elevation on the existing map of ten, and we map it lower at six. You're not going to have a step from ten to six when you cross a street. So you have to, you have to figure out where we agree with them. And we do agree with them at about the limits of, of the, the removed area and the green area. So you've got features at the north end there. That's based on topography. So they, they mapped... Much of that large area to the north is what they call unnumbered A-zone. They didn't predict a, a base flood elevation. So it's, it's a less, or an approximate, approximate method. So when we did our models, we looked at base flood elevation, and where base flood elevation begins to converge with the ground on the north side, we, we cut off the, the change. So we, we think that in those locations, it's, it's approximately correct. And at the south side, where Ponchatoula Creek and Yellow Water River Canal tie in, our results begin to converge with what was mapped, if that makes sense. Some of those areas were just not studied.
Okay, because like some of the west side, right over that little green area, it used to be an X, and then they, they moved it in, in the flood zone, and a lot of the area has, you know, never flooded, you know, ever. So that's why it was on the west side of town. I was curious, you know, why it was just left out. Is it just that it was, ran out of room in, in the, in the study? Or if it was, you know, for funding, or if it was just, you know, you saw something on there that was, the elevations were most likely correct?
Well, we tried to stay within the study area. And, and where the, the map changes deviate from the study area, it's because we had to work it to, to make the tie-in. So on the, on the west side... Councilman on the...
About the interstate, yeah.
About the interstate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in the, in those streams. So that was outside of our study area.
Yeah, it's in the city limits.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. I remember meeting about a while back, and, you know, to kind of, you know, originally started to kind of have that in there. Couple of people from the district actually were at one of those meetings and were under impression it was going to be on there. So that's why I was just kind of curious why I don't, I don't see it there, you know?
Okay. Well, we can take another look at that. I mean...
I mean, it was an X, and it was moved, so like, therefore, it wasn't like it's always been, you know, so I may not be in. And since some of those people have been there for a long time, and, you know, you actually said, man, it hadn't been high at all. That's why I was, you know, thought it might have been an error possibly in some of that area. So that's why, you know, I was, then we talked, I thought it was going to be, you know, looked at. It's not a large area, but it's, it is an area, you know, in the city, so.
Yes, sir. We could take another look at that for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would that affect the holder at all?
We can look at it now, and then we can address it with FEMA. We would need to amend our, our application. But I, I think, I mean, any day, we expect their initial comments.
So let's say, for instance, in the meantime, they, let's say, for instance, they send a comment tomorrow. What Councilman Diveterio is asking with that, how long would that take?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. We, we can look at it quickly, but as I stand here, I can't, I can't give you an answer.
So, on your end, you don't know how long it'd take? But I know you wouldn't know how long it would take with FEMA, is my question.
Oh, with FEMA?
No, with you.
Oh, with me?
Yeah.
Well, we, we ended the study where we ended it because it seemed to converge with, with the existing maps. So it's, and that was kind of at the limits of our, of our mapped benefit area, or our mapped study area. So it's going to be, like, we'd be getting into new territory as, as we get outside. So it's kind of hard to say. We haven't looked at that. I don't mean to be dodgy, but we just, it's kind of unexplored right now.
Originally, I remember bringing it up, and that's why I was saying, I don't know if, how, maybe it got slipped or whatnot, but that was a, you know, area right there that was, you know, wanted to get looked at. So hopefully, you could take a look at it and kind of see if it's worthwhile looking into.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, I think we ran out to the end of our defined study area. And at that point, our results were converging with the FEMA maps. So I, I assume we're talking about kind of the, at the bottom right of, of that picture. Is that where we're...
Seems like he hadn't looked at it yet. I mean, he said, he didn't, he thought it was outside the scope of the work, which I don't know why, but, but I mean... It's right here. He never looked at it.
What area are we talking about? I'm just having a hard time seeing.
This area right here.
But what is it?
It's West City Interstate. It's kind of like where Winn-Dixie Warehouse is, well, Pole Warehouse Distribution is to the interstate right there, that little area. That's the west side right there in my district, on the edge of District Four. And it used to be in, it used to be an X, and it was moved. And, you know, hadn't, you know, a lot of them people have lived there for a long time. So I mean, and water had not, you know, ever been any close to that area. So that's why I thought that might have been a good one to look at when we originally met. It might have had an era in the mapping or some, you know, and that's...
Right.
So I, I met with you several times, and I was wondering, I think, in the beginning of the deal. So that's why, you know, I don't know if somebody just cut it out, or if it was just a oopsie or what, but it was definitely talked about. It was in my district. So, I mean, and I only have certain areas that actually in flood zones in my district, and that was one of the few. So...
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the map where it showed the area of study? Is that, this is where you're talking about, right?
Yes.
So that wasn't the study area?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And if, if that was something that wasn't addressed, or potentially there'd be another one, would there be anything that stopped you from doing like a second application to FEMA with that information? So they basically have two, or does it have to be the whole city of Hammond, all, all submissions at one time? Do you see what I'm saying? I don't know how this works because it's the federal government, and there doesn't sense.
Well, I mean, there are, there are little lomers and lomas done all the time. So if you, if you go online and look at the flood insurance rate maps, it's a, it's a shotgun pattern of little revisions that have been made. So there's no statutory or regulatory reason there can't be a second application or a separate application.
Hopefully, you can get to it. It's one of the little parts of my little area that, in my district, that are actually in it that...
Yes, sir.
I brought up several times, so, but I appreciate it.
Actually, a question, sir. So look, since there was a part of it, and I don't think it was answered yet, how was it left out when there was a part of it? And you all had met several times in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
So that seemed like you never met with me. So if you left anything out on me, I can't say nothing because I never met with you. But Councilman Sam, he'd have met with you several times. And to me, that would have been one of the main focus that I would have had under my scope. Let me make sure I get this here down, if I don't get nothing else down. Because I had asked about the entire city of Hammond, and which, and which once you had told me you couldn't do the whole city because I think the cost effect, that what it was going to be. And, and so I understood that, and which, we don't have no problem so much in District Three, you know, unless it's around the canals. But how could you leave this here off when it was one of the most important areas on there?
Well, it appeared to us, like I was saying, that, you know, where our revised water surface matches the mapped water surface, where they begin to converge, that's, that's kind of a natural spot to, to terminate because we, we tend to agree there. So, you know, it appeared to us down that leg of Yellow Water River Canal that it was, that it was converging. Does that make sense? So... Yes, but we will take another look at that. So we, we tried to terminate where, where our models agreed with, with their maps, if that makes sense. So, I mean, we didn't say, well, we're going to cut this part out of District Four and, and then go smoke a cigarette. And what, you know, it wasn't an intentional omission. It was, it was a natural convergence of, of our modeling and the mapped elevations.
Yeah.
We will take a look, sir.
Yeah, because what I'm saying is, okay, the agreement that the city made with you all, we was paying you all to do a certain job. And so I don't hear nobody saying, okay, we're going to take some of the money away right now, since y'all didn't, to me, y'all didn't do the whole job that y'all supposed to do. It appeared to you what you just said. And so now, it's like, and how long, how long we've been working on this here project? Yes. I want to hear him say it. Yeah. How long we've been working on this project?
The initial look was December two thousand nineteen.
Yeah. Okay. And so what I got on here, I got on here six years altogether. And how many times you appear before us?
It's been a handful.
Yes, when you...
Four, four or so.
Yeah.
That's a guess.
Okay, well, I remember about two of them, really. So I'm just saying, look where we're at right now, and it's going on, what, six years? This year may going on seven years. I don't know actually when it started. So that's what I'm looking at. So how long? I know you can't give a time, but you have to give us something on the area that you all left off. all left off.
Okay. Well, sir, uh, we didn't leave it off to, to make a shortcut. So like I said, the, the reason that that wasn't included in the revision is because our results appeared to converge with the mapped, with the effective maps at, at that location. So that looked like the, the natural spot to, to terminate. Um, with respect to how long, I mean, for us to, to look at that, I mean, that can be a couple of weeks, if that's what you're asking. In the context of this whole effort-
Well, I don't want to rush it now. It's been a while. Take your time looking at it. So I don't, you know, if you take another month or two, just, you know, don't just, you know.
Yes, sir.
Don't, don't feel underneath the gun now. Yeah.
Right, we, we modeled it. So the models include that area. The model, the model is much larger than the benefit area. So the model is, the model is, is almost half of the parish. Um, but where the model results come and say that the base flood elevation is, is about here, say. I'm going to make a number up, 10. And in our model, water surface elevation falls and where it gets to about, gets to about 10, 11, nine, in, in the range there, then we say, well, this is about where we agree. So that's where we, that's where we stitch it back together. Yes, sir. That's, that's more or less it. So the model included that area.
And it was surveyed, right? You guys did, the, the six years you've been doing this, y'all surveyed everything and all of that data is in your model, correct?
There were, we surveyed every bridge in the benefit area and we, we surveyed another 10 or so cross-sections through those, through those channels. Um, and I mean, it hasn't been six years of active time. So we would do a, we would do a piece and stop and then-
Were you waiting on money, engaging, you know?
Or when, when the authorization was, was given, we would, we would proceed to the, to the next stage.
Yeah. All right. Well, I appreciate you to look at it for me.
Yes, sir. Well.
Anyone have, have a question? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Deborah Swenson, 12 Ravenwood Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I live in Woodbridge subdivision, which is the subject, large subject of the Corps of Engineers study and obviously probably a big part of this study. Um, I have a question about where we can get a copy of what you've been doing or see or view what you've been doing online. Is there a place where we can look at that? Because when you've been flooded and you're trying to, you know, get help and, you know, kind of look at things, we like to look at studies and things like that that are going on. Is there a place where we can get information on this online or this actual study or?
Well, the study's probably huge, but I would love to see the slides, right? See, people are asking, they can't see the slides that are viewing at home. And I'd like to see it, you know, your proposed map, all understanding it's subject to change. But I have lots of people who want to see just potentially what could be happening. Thank you.
All right. So I'll just keep in touch with you all about that. Um, the other question I have is, and I may not be putting this in the right context. Obviously, we were flooded in Ida, never flooded before. Did y'all take any kind of consideration into, our subdivision has a Loma, a letter of map amendment. What happened was, for years, people had flood insurance, flood insurance. They never flooded. So one of the past councilmen got together with neighbors before I'd even moved in. I wish I would have known this. And they got a letter of map amendment. Well, after that, some people started flooding in our neighborhood. Um, when I moved in there, there was a question between the mortgage and insurance. Do we need flood? Do we not need flood? So being a legal secretary, I said, I want flood. So I'm glad I had it when we eventually flooded in Ida. But I just wanted to know if y'all took any kind of facts in, considering maybe not just things off of FEMA site or what you found, but actual occurrences like in 2021 when Ida happened along, which would have been during your study. Do y'all take those kind of individual events in? Okay. Okay. So y'all were considering that too?
So if we look at the history of flood insurance and the date-
Okay.
And try to find the rainfall and to correlate that to the, to the rainfall. Structure flooding happens for all kinds of funny reasons. It can be the, you know, the creek overflowed the banks, or sometimes it can be a local obstruction. It's not related really to the map. It's related to some kind of a local, local obstruction or construction on a branch panel.
Right. And to give credit to the city, they are working on a project for us in that area. So we're very pleased about that. Um, because the reason I ask is I was told I wasn't there, but there was like a 30 something mile an hour rapid going down my driveway. So probably it was just the flow. And I just want to make sure, since it was during your study, that you actually took in that during that event or that event that happened in Ida. Um, the other question I have is, um, uh, when will we be able to see the public review? Will that be like a public announcement or will the city council know? So we can, you know, when you said it's going to be open to the public for review eventually?
It's required to be published in the city's official documents.
Okay.
So that, that will be the conclusion of FEMA review and, and city-
So that would be the newspaper, right?
And FEMA agreeing on the, on the map revision.
Right.
And it will be published in the newspaper.
Okay, great. Okay.
That potentially could be months, correct? Because you have 90 days in between each time y'all discuss something.
Yes. I, I would expect months.
So in like a public notice area?
It'll be a public.
Okay. And the other question is, um, because I have been monitoring and kind of going to a lot of meetings with the Corps of Engineers, do y'all work closely with them or is this something that you could send a copy to them? Because they have a major study of tangible pairs on, ongoing right now about flooding.
We could.
I would, I would appreciate that. So-
Because they're software, so it's, the standard is-
So do you need me to give you the con, the contact for that or I can get your email maybe after the meeting and-
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ron Matthews, 905 Delmar Boulevard, um, city planning zoning commissioner. Just have a couple of comments. Um, I've been involved in a couple of these type studies with property of my own that I own in, in other municipalities. Um, one of the things that, and maybe you can help me. I don't know what your firm was engaged to actually, the total scope of your work. But the last two that I've been involved with, they've, they had what's called like a review, a reviewed study of the model. In other words, you have an engineering firm doing the model, you have another engineering firm reviewing the model that they've done. Uh, similar to an appraisal, you know, appraisal and a reviewed appraisal. Government requires that. Uh, and, and both cases where I saw that done, it expedited the process of dealing with FEMA or dealing with the Corps. Because not only are, are one firm saying, hey, this is what we think it should be, you have another firm saying, yeah, we review what they said and we concur or we don't concur. And the likelihood of you getting what you want approved is much greater, uh, when you have a reviewed, uh, review of the model. So I don't know if that was something that you guys were engaged to do. Because sometimes it's, it's handled under the umbrella of the engineering firm. Sometimes it's handled under the umbrella of the owner where the owner engaged two separate firms that have two, two separate scopes of work. So I'd like to get your announcement.
No, there was not an external review.
Okay. All right. So put your seat belts on. You're going to be waiting a while.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance requiring budget reports to the city council at the second city council meeting following the end of each quarter. Councilman Andrews.
Again, uh, each member was provided a copy of, of the proposed, um, budget that will be submitted at the end of each quarter. Uh, as I stated, it could be up to 30 to 40 to 50, maybe no more than 60 pages to the max. And it is broke down by each department. Anybody have any questions on that item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council. Second.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Final adoption of ordinance number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a street naming request by Devon Wells to rename Carolina Street to Willie Grant Jackson Drive. Charles?
Again, this was previously, excuse me, previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, was introduced at the last council meeting and we're asking for the council's approval tonight.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Thank you. Once again, uh, giving Mr. Jackson family the opportunity to see because he was a city councilman at one time. So thank you so much for the ministration, for, for this here matter going through and everything. Uh, when we're going to get the sign made? All right. Thank you so much. That's it.
Again, Councilman Wells wanted to thank you for spearheading this particular, uh, ordinance move to change that street. Not only was he a councilman, he was also an educator in our community for many years. I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Final adoption of ordinance number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Kenneth Crockett to rezone 517 Hewitt Road from RS dash 11 point A to MX dash N in accordance with the preliminary plat by Max Bowden, Inc., dated 8/21/24. Charles?
Again, this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission where it was approved. It was introduced at the last council meeting and we're asking for the council's, uh, approval tonight.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this item?
Yes, I have, uh, a young lady in the back. She'd like to come up and speak.
Good evening.
I live on Hewitt Road.
Your name, please?
My name?
Yes, ma'am.
Brenda Longino.
Okay.
And I live on Hewitt Road and I would not like to see a rezoning go on because it would be in my front door.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Yes. This is in District Three. And for any other residents, any other districts, RS 11A to MXN. And by now, the city councilman, we should know what these letters mean. If not, get somebody explaining to you. Here we have, if you look at the map, if you saw anything about it, it's home, single-family homes all around the property. I don't even know why in the earth would this even come up. And it's so sad that in the planning and zoning meeting, I went to one of them just to see what was going on, what was talked about. We can't keep letting this go on. We losing the landscape of how Hammond's supposed to be. I'm about the only one and I know this without a doubt. Born and raised in the city of Hammond, born and raised in District Three. I have a lot of love for District Three. I can't speak about no other councilman. I'm always going to have something to say when something actually changing. I came to the planning and zoning meeting just to see the guy that I saw there, just to see what we're going to talk, to see what was going on. When these things coming before planning and zoning, I, I wish they have something that they can actually look at. I mean, how we going to build this? How we going to do this here? I don't know. Things have changed so much with planning and zoning for what I see. Because I went to one of the meetings, what y'all call it, the sandwich meeting. I went to the sandwich meeting and I think they had two, uh, two or three at the most. And I just wanted to hear what was said, what was going on. It's not good. And if we let this here pass, realize what direction the city of Hammond going to go through and what it going to look like. And, uh, Gonzalez District, Andrew District, they have an overlay. It protects them. It protects the single-family homes. I've been asking about this. What could we get this done in District Three? How could we get this done? I've been saying something, but it's like nobody hear me. Nobody hear me. So make a long story short, I'm against it. 100%. I went out to the residents. I don't make a decision on my own. I would never do that. I'm going to always go to the people that it going to affect. This not in front of my house. And so if it was in front of my house, yeah, I'm going to speak about it. But it's not in front of my house. That's why I go to the people who are going to affect. And the young lady that stood up here just before us, I didn't even knock on her door. It's right in front of her house. Because that little sign, I'm against that little sign that we putting out when we changing the zoning. The sign is too small to read. I know they got a specs. I know they got a standard. But when the city, when the parish is getting money from the federal government, you can see that sign almost a mile away. That sign going to make you stop and say, let me see what's going on. So hopefully the city, that if it takes the city councilman, that we can come up with something, that we can have a sign, not, you, we know the sign, we know the sign, we know the size of the sign because we had this here problem with Metlin. We going to have to do something to get a bigger sign for everybody could see the sign. You know, thank God that she was able to see the sign right across the street from her house. So we have to do better with the city, letting the people know what's going on when changes are being made in their area. So once again, I want to say, I'm against this. I'm against it. Thank you, President.
Anyone else from the public?
Does, uh, this rezoning, I mean, can't you, if you wanted to get something done with a senior living, couldn't you get a conditional use for a senior living at that point in time? If, if that was, if, instead of rezoning the whole property for just, just the use of, of whatever comes at that time?
Honestly, I really don't know. Um, and actually that map, the shaded area, I think is a little incorrect. The home, the structure, the house that's there now was facing this woman's house is not to be rezoned. It's just the back three and a half acres or so that we're rezoning. So that when Silverback Properties purchases that property, it'll attach to all that green area, which has already been rezoned. Um, and that will have access to that property to the back. So the, the house, the residence itself is going to stay residential. The house is still going to be a house. Nothing's happening to that. As a matter of fact, we have, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars.
So you're saying it's not that whole shaded area, it's really just the back part of what you trying to get done?
That's correct.
It's not the front edge on Hewitt?
No, we, we've invested several hundred thousand dollars in that house that's in the front. We have beautified that house that has been-
Why aren't they showing like that on there?
I have no idea. This has been going on for five months. We've been back and forth and back and forth. Every time we try and do something, something gets changed or, or put off or whatever. Um, and I'm just, I'm ready to move forward on this. We're not doing anything to jeopardize the beauty of that neighborhood. Matter of fact, we've enhanced that neighborhood. If anybody wants to drive by that house, take a look at the money that we've poured into that beautiful old home built in 1909 and walk inside, I'd be happy to take them inside. We're, we're going to try and sell that house itself. From what I understand, the, um, the, the gentleman who's purchased that property and had that all rezoned already, is going to rezon the back or wants to have the property rezoned before he purchases it, just to be able to have additional acreage to build a nursing home for the residents of Hammond. I don't understand what the ill feelings are about this whatsoever.
I mean, that should have been probably presented better than, I'm not, I'm, it's not your fault. I guess you turned it in and they presented this or whatnot. But I mean, right the way it looks right now, you're zoning all that up to the Hewitt, which you know, is a big, a big difference if you just need a piece on the back.
Whoever's doing the mat, the, the screen, can they go to the survey? I don't know who does that here. If they're listening. Because, yeah. Down a little bit more?
Other way.
I'm sorry, the survey. Keep going. Right. Okay, stop.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes.
That matches that. And that's the house?
That's the house.
So, the application is for four-something acres, and that back piece is 3.5. So, which, is it just the 3.5, or is it include the 1.25?
Just 3.5.
Well, then, there's an error in the application.
This is something that I brought this up in our meeting, and it's my understanding that they're gonna correct that map. Generally, we had a conversation.
Yes, sir.
It's not that, it's not that, it's the application. So, where the area up top adjoining Hewitt, that's where the house was renovated. That's not part of that.
Track A.
He's requesting going to MX-N, not MX-C now.
Yeah. And so, you want. You want track B to be MX-N.
Correct.
And then, track A, for the woman who lives across the street, can see that the track A would be residential.
It would stay where it is. You're not proposing that. Now, the, now, what zoning are y'all trying to do, that back part, the N or MX-C? MX-N neighborhood, okay, all right, yeah.
To match everything that's on the right, because we already rezoned that. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big difference there.
Again, and I mean, I openly invite any of you, I'll meet you there whenever you'd like. You can go walk through that house with me, and if you think I'm trying to make the neighborhood look worse, or make the neighborhood go in the wrong direction, you're all wrong. I can promise you that. There's a lot of money invested in that house. It has been abandoned for 10 years. We purchased it and renovated that house beautifully. Beautiful. The land in the back is gonna be, again, to make Hammond prosper and make Hammond beautiful and create jobs, tax base. There's gonna be a lot happening with that piece of property. I don't understand the objection. I really don't.
Let me help you out right quick with a little bit. Maybe I can get you to understand. A man's house is his council.
Yes, sir.
And inside of these neighborhoods, you bringing in the nursing home is something I would say that probably would be needed, that's gonna pick up a little more traffic into their neighborhood. Most people buy their homes based off of what they're seeing. So, that could be part of the reason why you're getting some of the feeling that you're getting. I wouldn't totally disagree with you on what has been spent to renovate the other home. It's nice. I'm quite sure it makes the street look a little bit better. But you have to take into consideration the people that live there.
I do. I do. What I understand, too, the entrances for this is gonna be on, what is it? So, there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be huge driveways and all this other stuff. I think he's even building a daycare on the corner.
He is. That's already been approved. The, this might be a planning question, but if he wanted to make the, you know, it's basically a site plan whenever a nursing home were to come in, right? And in that site plan, Ron, you might be able to answer this, there's fencing that's required in making sure that it's aesthetically, you know, kept very separate. That's done, correct?
And it's something that if councilwoman Wicks is, if you bring that up as an added feature.
We also have a big green space between the house and track B. So, this is not gonna be anything that's gonna be visible from Hewitt.
Well, I'm gonna say this here. It's amazing, man. And I ain't lying. I saw it gonna start this year off right, 2025. We're gonna go back and forth with nobody. But here it is, District Three. This man say, this gentleman say he been dealing with this issue for five months. And from the map, for everything we see is wrong. And let me tell you, sir, what you did to that house is wonderful.
Thank you.
Nobody taking that house from you. You did a damn good job.
Thank you.
So, look like I'm gonna have to get 25 going the way I supposed to get it going. We're not taking the house from you. You did a good job on the house. Everybody pleads with it in the community, but we have a problem. The councilmen, I see y'all have so much to say. It's in District Three. Remember that. Whatever they do in your area, if you tell them dig a canal, if you tell them you want a dog park, whatever you ask for, I agree with you. Once again, it's in District Three. District Three have a lot of love for one another in District Three. I don't know about y'all there. The people in the area came to my house when I didn't go to their house. And the young lady back there, she'll tell you, I didn't even knock on her door. She know I stayed. She didn't knock on my door. She said, I've been watching that sign. I've been going to them meetings. She said, I didn't even think you were gonna be here tonight. I wanted to make sure I come here and voice my opinion. And just like you said all that, did you go across the street and tell her what was going on, which I was trying to do?
No, sir, but when I was doing the renovation, we waved and said hello. We greeted each other. All those neighbors across the street, all those houses. We had people that would come by and slow down, toot the horn, and wave and give us a thumbs up that we were doing a great job. So, and I did talk to a few of the neighbors. In all honesty, I don't know if I spoke to her or not. Okay, my apologies. But I did speak to a few of the neighbors. They asked what we were doing, told them we were renovating the house, yada, yada. So, I have talked to some of the people, but I did not go knock on every single door and talk to people. No, sir, I did not.
No, no. You didn't do nothing wrong, but I'm just trying to say. I'm gonna still make this a good year, 2025. And I'm gonna say this here. I'm gonna vote no, or we gonna table this. I'm not gonna go back and forth with nobody up here on nothing. When it's concerning District Three, I represent District Three. They voted for me for a reason. So, if I sit up here, act like I don't see nothing, don't hear nothing, the ball fell somewhere. And so, I don't know what's going on, how all this here took place. The lady in the back, she wasn't even supposed to come here, because this is what I tell everybody. You can come if you want to, but I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna do. And so, she came on her own. Nobody else didn't show up because we don't wanna target nobody when they're against something. And somehow, when we target people, it end up being a problem. So, the people blowing the horn at you, waving, sir, when y'all was working on the house, I passed by there. I blew the horn at you. I ain't give you this here, but I blew the horn at you. So, you did a good job on the house. Nobody taking nothing from the house. We don't wanna see the community change so fast. That's what we saying. Yeah, we want changes. We want good changes. We want good growth. We want smart growth. But what you ask for, I promise you, this is my first time hearing this. And I read my email today. I haven't been reading my email. I looked at my emails today, and some lady, I supposed to get in touch with her on a Tuesday. And everybody know, I'm not calling nobody on a Tuesday because I got to concentrate what's going on up here. So, I can't recommend we can sit here and table this here. And I guess Mr. Ron, they gotta go back before y'all or something, or y'all through with it? Yeah, well.
Ma'am, are you against, since the house is staying residential, what's being built in the back? If it's a nursing home or assisted living home, are you against that in the back area? Period, okay.
Let me ask you, what you brought up about the nursing home with the green space and all, everything else. There's already plans, everything's been drawn up for this nursing home?
I don't know. We have to contact Silverback Properties. But I have a question. Why was all the other property rezoned for the exact same reason, and the problem now there's an issue with mine?
Well, originally, they proposed it as, they were trying to clean it up. They proposed it as he didn't care what it was, the planning planner, who, somebody told the city, told him, just do it, pick whatever you want, put it at commercial, mixed commercial. Well, I made a comment about, you know, does it matter if it's neighborhood? And he said, no, I don't care. He's the one, which that's what it should have probably been advised to the guy originally, since he didn't care, and neighborhood's the most restricted out of the two, next to neighborhood. So, then they came back, got with Councilman Wells, I think, and they figured out it was okay, I guess, and it came back. This over here, you know, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know why, I mean, they just, you know, you could probably do a conditional use of it. I mean, if it's a nursing home, but I mean, when you rezon it, I mean, there's no set in stone that if something happens, that a guy, you know, sells whatever, it could be, it could be a whatever. So, I mean, it's all rezoned. So, I mean, personally, I mean, I'm all about, you know, a nursing home and everything. I mean, you know, communities need them. But I mean, you know, that would be more of a conditional use at that time. So, I mean, I don't know why, you know, they wouldn't get the thing sent in if you plan on putting a nursing home. And your reference into green space and everything else, it seems like somebody has seen a, you know, a plan of something, so that'd be great, you know?
I mean, as far as I know, no plan exists. The only thing that I knew when I talked to them about is I wanted to make sure that we left enough of the yard in the back, trees and bushes and all other stuff, so that it was obscured no matter what happened back there, whether nothing happened back there, or whether it became parking or whatever. I have no idea. I've never seen any drawings. I don't even know that they exist. I'm only trying to protect the property itself, house, and the setting of the house. We didn't want to clear it till you look through the, you know, out the back window, and you see a parking lot or a structure or something. We wanted to make sure that stayed green. That's why, you know, we discussed just leaving that space green and not making sure that there was enough property back there so that they, whatever came in the future, wouldn't encroach on the back of that house.
What access is that piece from the rear?
So, it will be accessed through the other property.
Right, but as of now, there's no road. There's no anything back there. So, you would have to get through it to it through the property at the rear.
This was all discussed in planning in the last couple of meetings.
Remind me, did we discuss dividing the property? Because I'm looking at our GIS, and it shows it as a single parcel. So, was that discussed? It was already done? I'm wondering if that's.
It's been voted on and passed.
Okay, so that might explain why it's shown the way it is. I think when this originally came to us, it was a single parcel. And you proposed dividing it. That could be done in-house because the zoning was staying the same. And then, the idea was to rezone just this back portion. So, the map is incorrect. The map shows the original parcel before it was divided into the residential at the top and the proposed MXN at the bottom.
Once again, y'all go on talk, sir.
Stanley Campbell, 408 Hewitt Road. I lived there for about 15 years on Hewitt Road. I don't live there anymore, but I'm from that community. My question to the developer is, what was the initial plan? Was that a part of what actually, what was put in place when they first came and they purchased this property? Because kind of, it's starting to be a common practice where the developers purchase this property, and once they get into the property, it turns into something else. This is a similar situation that we have right now going on with the homeless shelter. Our own apartment complex is all now Club Deluxe, and I have an issue with that one also. And this is similar to this situation, where the developers are just coming in, and they want to get in. And then, they come before the city council. It becomes an issue, especially on Hewitt Road. Even with the other developer that was approved, it's the same situation. I don't know if we need to put something in place to actually better this practice, but right now, the practice that the developers are using is ready, shoot, aim. You know what I mean?
Thank you.
You had brought up something just now besides the question that I have. If the property was originally one piece and it was subdivided, would not have, that had to be like a notice to this neighborhood to be subdivided?
No, and it's called an administrative subdivision. If a property owner owns a piece of property, and in this case, it was zoned RS-11, thank you. They can subdivide the property. They can split a larger parcel into smaller parcels as long as they meet all the requirements of that zoning and the use is staying consistent with that zoning. So, if you're planning to, as they're planning to do here, if the idea was to sell off part of the property, the first step would be to split the property so you could zone, rezone the back part if necessary, or sell off the back part to a different owner. So, I think the first drawing was when it was originally presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a single parcel. So, that should have been updated prior to this meeting. I apologize that that didn't happen. But Councilwoman Gonzalez's point, the attached survey that we have here shows the portion of the property that, if approved by the council, would be rezoned and then married with property to the east.
I was just thinking about how I live in a subdivision, and there's a property in there that we're just waiting and watching, that someone did subdivide without permission, but we got that retracted by the city. So, that would be a different situation if it was in a subdivision where there was an HOA. It could not be done without.
Correct, yes. It has to meet all, if it's in a historic district, if it's in a special overlay like the Iowa district, if it's in an area that has a homeowners association, all of those have to be considered before you can divide the property.
And the other question, situation that I want to speak on was, if this map is incorrect, I would just ask, would y'all maybe planning on tabling it? Because we don't want this to be a precedent with someone else to come in and say, oh, well, the map's wrong. Well, that other case, the map was wrong, and y'all just put it right through. So, I would just ask, it would be tabled until, I know it's a lot of administrative stuff, but just be tabled for that reason. So, there's no precedent.
My assumption, and I'm assuming here, my assumption is that it was simply a matter of the wrong document being attached. The earlier document would have shown the single parcel. The revised document should have shown the two parcels.
So, and I think it's more than just the wrong map, because the language says it's five-something acres, and it has the address of 517 Hewitt Road. So, I think that's a valid point, and, you know, Councilman Wells said, no, or table. I would say you would want to table this to, you know, address and make sure everybody understands what you're talking about doing and have a look at track A and B and how that's separate.
Pam Hanes, I also, I'm also in District Three. I'm totally against it. District Three from Magnolia Street to the corner of Hewitt is a sore eye. It's being cluttered. It's too much going on. I don't mind growth either, but it's taking away from the neighborhood of being single-family homes. And if the councilman asks to table it, it needs to be tabled because documentation is accurate. It's very accurate. We in trouble now because documentation is not right. So, no, I'm against it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna, you know, go with that. I mean, the councilman, I think everybody needs to respect the councilman of districts, what their wishes are. So, but anyway, and also, I'd suggest maybe you get with the Councilman Wells, you know, that district at some point in time to try to, you know, at least talk with him about it. I mean, that's just my opinion, you know, since it's in his district, and I make a motion to table it.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye, but I would like to meet with the Charles, the ministration, planning and zoning, so this won't happen again. A lot of these things taking place don't even have to take place at the meeting, if we just sit down and talk about it. Sir, I apologize once again. We should have sat down and talked. The guy that did it before you, it was an issue, and we sat down and talked. If we sit here and let this keep going on, that whole street gonna be an industrial street. We don't want that. And I'm gonna say this here. I talked to a guy with planning and zoning. He said, we based everything on the mall. The mall gonna be shut down in the next five or 10 years. Everybody order stuff from Amazon. People go to the mall and eat. We can't keep basing District Three, which is in, which in my district. The mall is in my district. We can't keep basing things on the mall. We can't. That's how the first one got passed. The gentleman told me he gonna build a daycare. I'm all for a daycare. He told me he wanted a home for senior citizen. I'm all for that, but we sat down and talked. He even invited me to dinner. I told him, yeah, I'll go, but I'm not gonna drink nothing but water because nobody gonna buy me. Nobody. And I make that very clear, whoever I go with. So, I'm saying this here, no, it's not hard. The reason they come to Hammond and doing this here, because Hammond don't have no rules. And by them not having no rules in place, it's always a green space. And you use one or two words, it'll pass. He built a beautiful house. He redid a beautiful house. Guess what? He ain't do six more houses like. He ain't do six more houses like that. He redid one house, built it in nineteen something, he said, that sound good. But guess what? It gonna affect the people that stay on that street. It's not gonna affect me. It gonna affect the people stay on the street. Stop trying to sell the public stuff that you don't have to. I sat there and said it. And thank you, ma'am. She had to sit there and say table it again. Like, you ain't hear when I said it. We still talking about something we shouldn't even be talking about. And how did I vote on that, Ms. Lisa?
It's a table.
Okay.
Councilman, we have our weekly review tomorrow if you'd like to be there with the planning and zoning. It's at eight thirty? I don't know.
That's too early for me.
All right. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon? I called him first.
Thank you again.
At least I can say he right about that. And if we go out to eat, he's drink water too, so. All right, final adoption of ordinance number four.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Brian Dozer to rezone 1009 C M Fagan Drive from MX dash N to MX dash C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Martin Surveying Solutions LLC dated 6/27/24. Charles?
Uh, this was also reviewed by Planning and Zoning previously. It was introduced at the last council meeting. Uh, we're asking for the council's approval tonight.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
This is also in District Three. Look at the letters. MXN to MXC. Charles, plain MXN.
MXN is a commercial zoning that is more neighborhood friendly. That's the simple way to put it. Um, MXC allows for some additional uses. Um, my understanding that is that Low End Road wants to expand their facilities, um, into this area across, essentially across the street, not directly across the street, but across the street from their current location. The MXN zoning doesn't allow that, but the MXC does. Uh, and it's consistent with the zoning in the area. There's other commercial, um, including commercial, um, highway, um, the mixed use commercial and the mixed use neighborhood commercial.
Thank you. Yeah.
So you're saying they're like, they're trying to expand it, like to do like the brewery on the side, on the other side of the road, like gnarly bar lads on the opposite side of the road, like something like that, or?
Yeah, they're wanting...
Is it expanding their, their brewery or are they expanding? Is that what you said?
Many storage.
Okay.
The brewery got...
Okay, yeah, you made a comment about they're expanding their brewery.
They closed.
Okay. Well, he just said they're expanding their brewery. So that's why I thought that's what he was getting at. So I have no idea if it's closed or not.
Low, low road, which is the...
Yeah, I said the brewery. I, I thought the, I may have that confused and I apologize if I do, but I, I thought that the brewery was moving in. I know there was a plan to do storage, but I thought, I thought it would, had been switched, but...
Okay.
I understand corrected then. I must have had that backward in my mind.
That's the only thing I was asking. I didn't know if that brewery was still in effect or not, but when you made that comment, I, I didn't know if that's what they're trying to do.
Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Wells?
Yeah, is the owner in here? Is the owner in here? This is in District Three again. We need to know what's going on.
Is it too late to table it, Andre?
I withdraw the motion.
I thought we were ready, so, yeah.
We withdraw the motion. Make a motion to table.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Charles, is any way, is any way that when, when these are items coming up, if somebody have questions, we will have somebody to talk to, to answer the question? Please, can we do that?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm not sure why the owner wouldn't have been here. Um, my understanding from talking to Planning and Zoning, we do have a new city planner now, uh, is that the representatives for these projects were notified that the meeting would be tonight and were asked to attend to do exactly what you asked for, a, a, answer questions, explain what, what exactly is going on and why. Um, so I will follow up first thing tomorrow and find out, you know, were, were we, were told that maybe they couldn't make it for some reason or?
Probably due to the snow, you know, it's snowing. So probably due to the snow. But no, I say this here because even with planning and zoning, if they don't show up to the planning and zoning meeting, it end up passing. And yet, nobody get to ask questions. Now I come before the city council and we'll do the same thing. And I've been saying it last year for a minute. Anything that's on the agenda, they need to be here, you know? Thank you so much that y'all did decide to table it because I would like to know, whatever we doing in District Three, please, and I'm saying it, I would like to know. Mr. Mayor, if I'd have knew that meeting was in the morn, in the morning, I would have showed up. But I got a doctor's appointment and so we're gonna see how many kids I'm gonna have, so. We need to go to that.
Meeting in the morning, is that, that the work session for the planning and zoning?
No, this is a weekly, uh, planning and zoning building review.
About a month and a half ago, two months, to review everything, all, all the jobs we have going, permits out. To review for the department to get together with employees and let everybody know what's going on, go over everything, just like we'll be going over that, uh, map as well.
We got a motion and a second table.
Right. Go ahead, Ms. Lisa.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Stanley Campbell, 408 Hewitt Road. I got a question. With the planning and zoning meetings, I know the mayor spoke about, uh, they have them in the morning. Do we have any sessions that are with the public where the public can actually give their input before it makes it to the floor of the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
Regular planning.
That one, so the, okay. Where, where's that posted further?
Uh, they have it scheduled online. It's the... Yeah, so that first, that first one at noon is a work session where they're talking out and troubleshooting it with the commissioners. And then that, that second Thursday, he said, the five o'clock meeting is where they vote, make their recommendations to us. Both opportunities, public can attend, for sure.
And just to follow up on that, that is both posted on the website. Uh, it's posted, um, in the, the Daily Star, our Journal of Record. Um, you'll see signs announcing like a rezoning. And then there are also letters that are sent out to adjacent property owners. So, you know, there is an effort made to make sure that the public knows what's, what's happening and has an opportunity to comment, not, not just once, but, but twice prior to an introduction at the council.
My name's Shan Lebo. I live in Whitmore Acres. I gotta ask you a question. You said that when they put up the signs for zoning, that they send letters to the adjoining residents.
There are letters that go out to the adjacent property owners, correct?
How does that happen for every?
That, that has been a rule for as long as I've been here.
All right, well, we had a rezoning problem in Whitmore last year.
Okay.
And all that went up was a sign. No one was sent a letter.
I can go look back at that case, but...
Nobody received a letter.
I, I can't speak to that particular instance.
Is that the group, the group home issue? Do you guys send letters for conditional use issues?
I, I think we do. I, I'm not sure. On, on an ECU, that's, that's a...
That might not have been one of the letters or something.
But...
It was a rezoning request that should have been...
The group home was not a rezoning. It was, it was conditional use.
Just one and a half dozen of dollars.
You, you would probably think it would be on there to notify what a conditional use adjoining property, just like a rezoning. I mean, you would think it'd be the same. It's still, I mean, it's not changed permanently, but it's, it's chang, it's making a modification. So you would think you would want to notify it. So if it's not written like that, it should be written like that, I would, I would see no reason why it would not be on the paper like that.
Right, I can't, I can't speak directly to expanded conditional use. Those don't come up very often. Those are, those are special case. But I know for variances, which are more common and for rezonings, they, they're definitely signs that go up and letters that go out. I can, I can find an answer to that question about ECUs.
There was one other thing that Councilman Wells had mentioned about those signs. Those signs get blown away. The signs get taken up by some people. Nobody, I don't know that anybody from the city will check to make sure that the signs are there. But really, something bigger?
That's probably something that would have to be changed, uh, with an ordinance, I guess, Andre, an ordinance resolution or whatnot to change, modify, modify the, uh, the change on the sign. It probably have to be introduced, brought to planning, zoning, come back to us like normal.
UDC has specification.
Maybe we'll go ahead and work on that. Uh, Andre, maybe can draft something for us or something to, to propose, maybe? To modify, maybe the sign, uh, a little bigger.
Because most people don't go to the paper or record. They don't have a subscription and they're not gonna sign up online to see it. So that's our only way of knowing.
I, I made a note earlier when, uh, the Councilman Wells made a comment about the larger sign. Um, I have to look at the UDC to see what's in the UDC. A lot of times, it's a minimum, right? So they'll say a minimum size of whatever the current dimensions are. So if that's all it says, if it's a minimum size, we can go bigger without having to change anything. We'll just make that part of the new. Correct, correct, so.
Can we add, can we go ahead and add conditional use to adjoining property owners? I mean, that's not a big deal.
No, like I said, I'm just...
We can put it in the record and that way we won't have this conversation again.
It might already read like that and I'm sure it might already say that.
Correct. I, I, I can't speak to that one in particular, but it may already be covered by the signage. If it's not, I made a note to talk to our city planner about that.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Lisa.
Well, I was just gonna say, what happens is when planning and zoning, say for example, these items, they send out letters. After they send out letters, I send out letters saying that we're gonna have a public hearing for city council. As far as the item you're speaking of with the group home, I don't know if they sent out a letter, but I know I sent out a letter and put a sign in front of that home. So I know exactly what you're talking about. So could it possibly be, again, it was just the neighbors right there? Because it wasn't like, you know, a neighborhood. But I sent out letters to adjacent neighbors right there, which come from planning and zoning. I don't know who the... Well, I'm just saying, whatever they gave me is what went out. So some letters did go out. Did they go to everybody? I don't know. So I just wanted to say that, that regardless, if it's a plan, most planning, all planning and zoning items that I'm aware of, I get letters from them and that's the letters they send. I retweet them for city council. From the planning and zoning secretary. And we send them out. So you, whatever area should receive at least two letters, one for the planning and zoning meeting and one for this meeting. So, and I have to say that mine went out. So I don't know if anybody else's went out. I'm just saying.
All right. Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve the spot located at 201 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, to obtain an alcohol permit for a restaurant. The owner is The Spot Hospitality LLC. Charles, Risher?
This is, uh, an on-premise high-low alcohol permit. Um, it's a new restaurant that's gonna be opening home, uh, opening soon, sorry. Um, previous businesses that were located at that location were Splitter Burger and Shacks. Um, is this Mr. Aklek, Alec? Alec, I'm sorry. Uh, Glenn Alec is gonna answer a question at the council.
Not a problem. Any questions?
What, can you tell us about what the spot's gonna be?
It's gonna be basically, you know, a bunch of different grilled cheeses, some sandwiches, po'boys, pizza, just basic food, more or less.
For the record, state your name and address for me, please.
Alec, 201, uh, Thomas.
Anyone else having any questions? Anyone?
I have a question. Why does business owners say their business address, but we always have to say our residence?
You can say...
Say 1905 West Thomas, we're on business.
Yeah, you could.
I can say, I live at 106 North Magnolia.
It's not, it's not about you, but it's always happened. I'm sorry.
I was giving address so people knew where the location was.
It's come up, uh, not long ago to where we, I think even the chair changed it to where you wouldn't have to give your personal address where people would know where you live. So that's...
Yeah, I don't think it was directed towards you. I think she was just making a comment because generally speaking, yeah, generally, yeah, uh, prior. Yeah.
Pleasure to the council.
Yeah. Mr. Alec, thank you. Once again, I'm doing business in the city of Hammond. So thank you all. Used to be over there in District Three a long time ago on Coleman Street.
That's right.
So thank you again, man. Uh, I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
We try to make Hammond better. So thank you, uh, you got my support. I just wanna know, man, how you come up with the name The Spot?
So if you go, once we open, you'll see on the whole right-hand wall, there's a mural of the world. So we're gonna pick a spot in the world and feature food from that spot for like a week at a time.
Wow.
So that's basically how it came up.
Okay. So I can come there, get some water, huh? I can't drink and drive, so I gotta get some water. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Glenn.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with Lawson-Bonay Construction, Inc. for thirteen hundred feet of one and a half inch electrical bore in Woodbridge subdivision in the amount of forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Mayor?
Uh, this is an issue we had with a contractor, something that, uh, has been on our plate to get changed. Um, these companies that come in and bore for fiber optics, they don't need to get permits. Uh, federal government doesn't make them get permits because the overall goal was to get internet service across the country for those who couldn't afford it. So they wanted to get lines everywhere. Problem with that being is multiple companies come right behind another company and rebore another line. Um, in this particular case, this one company broke the line multiple times within days. So I directed the, uh, Sewer and Water Department, directed to tell them, get out of the city. Uh, we spoke with, uh, Andre and we're gonna submit a letter of demand from this company, hopefully to get the money for what they destroyed. Because it's a lot of money to go in and replace this line for the lights in Woodbridge. So, um, that's why we're asking to go ahead and get this thing done. So the citizens in Woodbridge can have their lights back on. Now, the federal government does say that the state has authority to make a change. When it's a water line and they hit it, we know water's running. When it's a sewer line and they hit it, we don't know till a heavy rain comes and the rainwater inundates that hole and then the residents in that location are having trouble flushing or what have you with their sewer. So it's a, it's a problem that, uh, we've been talking to state reps. So if you talk to your state rep or senator, please let them know. That's something that they can actually do at a state level possibly to have these people permit when they come into cities. Let us know where they're drilling and possibly go back and, and camera what they did to make sure that they haven't hit anything.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrew?
Aye. Resolution number three.
A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Ditten Planet LLC, held on Saturday, February eighth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to six PM. The event will take place at Cade Square Park, 200 West Charles Street, Alec Griffith.
Mr. Griffith here?
He isn't here, but I will say he's had multiple events in that park and I've made comments about where he needed to put that stage to keep the noise from the neighborhood behind him and going toward the Locretta area. He's done pretty much everything we've asked him to do and he's haven't had any problems as of yet, but that doesn't neglect, neglect the fact that he's not here.
I ask a question, Andre. If we table this item for him to be at the next meeting with him?
You'll have time.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrew?
Aye. Resolution number four.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law to Benny's Place during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Planet LLC, held on Saturday, February eighth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to six PM. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two hundred West Charles Street.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Reports, mayor?
Uh, we had a very successful Christmas this year, we had, uh, beautiful downtown lighting coming in from the mall. We actually did some lighting and hoped to do more in some of our parks. Um, Santa Claus saw about six hundred kids. Uh, thankful, very thankful to the Tyser family who allowed the city to have that train that we use, uh, we've been having for many years. Uh, so that's actually the train owned by the Tyser's. Um, and also, Rainbow Trout, which is not conducive to our area, will be placed into Zoumeri Park for people to fish and eat. Uh, unique thing we do every year, uh, well, actually, the Wildlife and Fisheries does, because they're, you know, they need cold weather. So during the cold months, they actually, uh, have been gracious enough across the state, but we get about three hundred Rainbow Trout put into Zoumeri Park this time of year for people to fish and, and eat.
Thank you.
Are they already there?
No, they'll be, uh, they'll come in on the twenty-ninth.
It's supposed to be cold then.
Any other council reports?
Uh, I just wanted, uh, administration, uh, mayor, and, and, uh, Charles, y'all can get some, uh, patrolling, um, up. Uh, we need a good bit of patrolling la- next few weeks over there in Villa West. We having a lot of car pulling and going through that neighborhood here lately, recently, so if we can get some extra patrolling, uh, going on in there to try to calm things down for a little bit, that'd be great. Um, they may move over to Lakewood, you know, after that, so if we can kinda just get that little area, um, next, next few weeks or so to kinda calm things down, had a little chase over there a while back this weekend, so, um, seems like it's been getting a little busy over there. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, one of the problems we have with a lot of theft, uh, you know, criminals get smarter every time we catch them, and as per how they do things, you very rarely see them break glass anymore, it's a door pull. Um, so what I tell a lot of college students that, uh, that rent from me and from houses I have, please, and they, and Southeastern does a good job of educating the, the students as well. Don't leave a purse, don't leave a computer, don't leave a bag sitting there, and please remember to lock your doors. But that does not make it right, uh, what they're doing, so that's just one of the helpful tips that we're trying to educate a lot of folks on as well.
Any other council reports?
The twenty-first, I'm sorry, on the trout.
Okay.
Yes, everybody looking at me. Happy New Year, Happy New Year, twenty twenty-five. And my goal is to make it better for the city of Hammond in District Three. It's a lot of new rules, and it's new rules that we need to go over and have it in place. We see what just happened tonight, so we shouldn't have to go through this again. Uh, I wanna thank some of the members from District Three showing up, and some of the other people in here, so thank you so much. And I tell everybody this here, we worry about the presidential race, which it'll be a minute before it affect you. The local races, the city of Hammond, these are rules that affect you every day. Pay attention to what's going on, because it's real. The presidential race not gonna affect you right now, but rules are being made in the city of Hammond every day. We need to be aware of the rules, I would like to know more about the rules, because what I do, I go out and explain to District Three what's going on. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for what you did over the holiday, helped keeping, uh, District Three clean with J.W. Davis. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we got a lot of work to do in District Three. We got a mess, uh, people in District Three on Second Avenue. I'mma say it like this here, it's been coming up, they've been, they've been talking about it for a minute, on Second Avenue. I don't even have to get an address of anybody ride on Second Avenue, you gonna see what the community they crying about. It's been going on before I got up here. It's time now, D-Cas burning tires in the neighborhood, and when you burn a tire, nothing but black smoke. And District Three, the people in the area can't come out and say nothing. If they come out and say something, they gonna get their windows broken, they gonna bust the windows in their cars. Shouldn't nobody be afraid, but that's what's going on in District Three. Second Avenue gonna have to be cleaned up.
Is that the one that looks like the junkyard with all the?
Can't talk about it, man, that's District Three now, you can't talk about it, it don't sound good.
Where do you have that, that, that bus parked there for a long time, I think?
Yeah, but we need help, once again, Martin Luther King Day is Monday, so everyone that can, please come out. They say it gonna be snowing, but I don't know, but come out if you can. I don't know if you gonna say that or not.
Yeah.
Okay, let me be quiet.
Oh, you got it, that's fine. Any other council report? All right, the echo on what Councilman Wells stated, and MLK Day will be out in the park, and the whole community, the city of Hammond is invited to that ceremony. Uh, also, the Willoughby Daniel Field Award will take place on next month, and I have it on here for us to go ahead and appoint, appoint an overseer to go ahead and get that process started.
What you need? I got somebody I wanna put on the team.
Okay, lo- is, longer they follow with the guidelines, say we, we'll, we'll be fine on that. I'll be with you on it, make sure if they meet the qualification for it.
Okay.
But we still, well, I'm over talking, I might not be the one that's overseeing it, so.
If you'd like to do it again, you do a fine job, Devon, did you wanna do it?
No. It kept doing. I just got somebody I wanna put on there.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and take it again.
Thank you, yeah.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Meeting adjourned.